Maplewood Work Session to Order on Tuesday, May tenth, two thousand twenty-two. Mr. Reese, would you please conduct a roll call?
Councilmember Crossley.
Here.
Councilmember Faulkham.
Here.
Mayor Canapper.
Here.
Councilmember Page.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt. I'm sorry. Councilmember Homa.
Here.
And Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Mayor Canapper, we have a call.
Thank you. I will skip item three because it is not needed. Item number four, Strategic Budget Priorities Review. Mr. Reese.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Before we get into the meat of the budget presentation, what I wanted to do this evening to kick us off was to summarize the first two pages of the memo that was in your packet. And then I'm going to read the third page, so indulge me for a little bit here. But this budget process started with the November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one Town Hall. And we got input from the community. Following that, we had a strategic budget priority work session on February first of this year and established some priorities with the full body city council. And this was extremely helpful. This kind of set the tone for staff and provided a framework for our budget. So together, I'm gonna, so I'm gonna outline our strategic priorities now that we did together. So first, outreach to the community. We're going to be printing the Maple Leaf four times over the course of the year. Second, investing in housing and basic human needs. And one of the ways we're going to do that is by hiring a social service coordinator. Third, we're advancing diversity, equity, inclusion with this budget. Fourth, with the establishment of a community jobs board, we're going to promote workforce development. Fifth, we're being responsive to boards and commissions. Six, public safety is a priority. And the big piece under that is our department reorganization where we'll have more community research officers. Next, infrastructure and pedestrian safety. We have several projects over the course of the year that will be investing in our infrastructure and pedestrian safety. Next, our parks and recreation are a big priority. And finally, fulfilling our commitment to the library, making improvements to the Maplewood Public Library. So while we are investing in many wonderful things in our community, we need to look to future budgets, be strategic, and promote fiscal responsibility. We expect to receive eight hundred and sixteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars and forty-two cents in ARPA funds in the next couple of months. This two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three budget uses these funds to help balance our budget just as we use the same amount of ARPA funds received last year to help balance our current fiscal year budget and rebuild during COVID. While the ARPA money has helped us get through this difficult period, we need to plan for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four budget since we do not expect to receive any more federal resources. We have purposely budgeted carefully with conservative revenue projections for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three fiscal year. This budget sets forth a two percent raise for City of Maplewood employees. We believe this is sustainable and reflects a measured approach to rewarding employees. In short, what we do in this budget will affect the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four budget and so on. It is critical that annual expenditures not exceed annual revenues. The city is unable to use reserve funds to balance our budget because it is not sustainable and we are currently on financial watch by our rating agency. The Finance Director and I will plan for next year's budget beginning almost immediately. We will look for ways to help manage through tighter budgets in the years ahead. For example, in the present fiscal year and for the fiscal year beginning July first of two thousand twenty-two, we have several studies and planning efforts that have occurred or will be starting soon. These studies and planning efforts are very worthwhile investments for Maplewood residents and businesses. However, we will likely not do as many in the subsequent budgets. We will tighten our belts over the next fiscal year by looking for more economies of scale in all our purchases citywide and becoming more strategic in planning supply orders and services to eliminate duplicative shipping costs and less redundancy overall. We'll explore partnerships with neighboring jurisdictions and pursue internal efficiencies over the long term to achieve cost savings where it makes sense while providing a high level of city services. As an example, we've achieved good results with the park agreement with Richmond Heights now in place for over fifteen years. We've had a joint training officer in place for five years now, located in the Maplewood Fire Department and shared among Maplewood, Clayton, Brentwood, and Richmond Heights. Both of these examples save taxpayer dollars and provide for a high level of service. We will explore targeted fee increases in areas where the cost has not cut up with the service being provided. We will continue to be aggressive when it comes to going after grant funding and I will ask department, department directors to make this a priority over the next year. We'll strive to maximize revenue growth, growth within and outside of the SPD District by bringing people to Maplewood with our year-round events and improving the infrastructure on Manchester Road so they can shop and engage in commerce. Finally, we will be fair yet firm when it comes to collecting and forcing outstanding business license fees and outstanding special business, business district fees. So that's the conclusion of summarizing the letter and reading the letter. What does all this mean? In short, we are doing great things in the budget by working together. Future budgets will likely be tight, which is why we're taking a conservative approach. As long as we remain diligent managing our budget effectively, as outlined in this memo, we're going to be okay. Okay, so that's the conclusion of the Strategic Budget Priorities Review under number four. And before we proceed, let's see if there's any questions or comments.
Just briefly, I want to say, I really appreciate how this was done. This was my second budget cycle. And I feel very sort of like grounded in what we're doing and why we're doing it. And that's because of the work that you guys have done. So I just want to say thank you for that.
Okay, it's okay, Mayor. We're going to proceed to the next item. Item number five, and I'll turn it over to Finance Director Miller to talk about revenue projections.
Good evening, Council. Mayor, it's a pleasure to be here again tonight. We're going to discuss the revenue projections for this year, two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three. I sent out the packet to everybody earlier. Let me just put up. A little bit bigger, so it's a little bit more legible for everybody. Can everybody see that? A little bit better? I mean, blurry, but, okay. So for projecting revenues for the next fiscal year, as the city manager has already stated, we went with a very conservative approach. We are still rebounding from COVID, so you would expect more activity because, because of that and more sales and everything else because everybody's wanting to get out and do things. But inflation is also going to kind of temper that. So trying to find that sweet, sweet spot in between the two is going to be kind of difficult. So we're going a little bit on the more conservative side, just to be safe. So what I was going to do is start with the general fund. And if it's too much detail for you all, you can tell me to move along. And if it's, if you want to stop, just stop me at any point. So for the general fund under property taxes, I am projecting an increase of about four percent or forty-four thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. I think that you can kind, our revenues can go up and down in this account. I think it has to do with when people pay their property taxes and if they pay them on time, if they're behind. I think that there's a strong possibility we have people that were maybe a little bit behind in their property taxes this current fiscal year. I'm hoping that people will be more caught up by next fiscal year, so. For sales tax revenue, I am projecting an increase of about six percent or two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Most of that, about two hundred thousand of that is just going to be in sales taxes alone and about thirty thousand with the local use tax. Again, the local use tax is the, the tax on the online purchases. So I kind of split it between the two. And that again is because we do expect more activity and then, but I don't think we'll have the growth that we had between two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two, just because of inflation. I'm afraid it might back up a little bit. For total grocery receipts, which is utility grocery receipts, that's for electric, gas, water, and sewer and phone. I am actually showing a very modest increase in that of about one percent or about twelve thousand dollars. The reason for that is we do have a decrease again, and I'm budgeting it continuously for the phone under the grocery receipts as people quit having home phones. It just keeps on going down. So that's, that's a major factor in that revenue category. For the next category is licenses and permits. I am estimating about a ten percent growth in that category. And while that's pretty large, I believe a big chunk of that would be under our merchants' life merchants, which is our business licensing between, you know, by having, making stronger efforts to go after, to collect all of those business licenses for all the businesses that we have in the municipality. I think will make a big difference in that account. I also know some are just behind. And so trying to get everybody caught up since COVID and get everybody back into the annual year, I think will make a big difference. And that's really the biggest change in that category overall. Under intergovernmental revenue, and that's like money that we receive from the state for different things like cigarette tax, gasoline tax. I do have, I am budgeting about a ten thousand dollar increase in the gasoline tax revenue. Part of that is I do think people are going to travel more this year by vehicle. It'd be whether it's drive, you know, to the lake or would do whatever. There's going to be more of that and maybe less flying if inflation continues. I also have included about an increase of about eight thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars. And it's a modest increase, but I think that the, the chip delay that we're having in vehicles is going to finally alleviate itself at some point in the next fiscal year, which means that we will have a pickup in auto sales. So I think that is really causing lag in auto sale revenue, so. Other than that, those are really the two main things that I, that I increased. And it's about a twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollar increase over the current fiscal year revenue projection. For the next category, which is charges for services, then you will see that there's about a three thousand dollar increase in the zoning slash subdivision. As I've kind of found in some of the way things have been recorded for revenues, there are going to be certain accounts that go up a little bit or go down a little bit. And a lot of that's because when revenue is supposed to be split between two revenue categories, it generally winds up in the other revenues category in the budget. And so through trainings, if we're correcting that and we're going to have it go into the correct line items. So we're trying to project more accurately how that's going to look. So when we get to other revenue, you will notice that that has a decrease and that's why, because we're trying to put that in the correct account. Total court fines and forfeitures. That number, I spoke with the court clerk to kind of get an estimate from her based on kind of the courts and the court turnover and things like that. These are estimates that she feels confident with, with the full year report, in person report. So I know that our numbers have been really low and that was, we didn't have court for a year and then we had online court. And that's, she, she said that she thinks that we should be about a hundred and sixty-eight thousand for next year. So I feel pretty good in that number there. For miscellaneous and other revenue, I have a budget, a total budget increase of about, or decrease of about four hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and four dollars. So some of that's going to be grant revenue that we've received or that we aren't budgeting for for next year because we have not received it. But you will see that we still have about a million dollars in other revenue. And that eight hundred thousand dollars of that is the ARPA funds. So my goal is to have our other revenue line really be a very minimal number because everything else should be put in a category of one of our categories that we have. So that is something I'm working on going forward in the next fiscal year. So hopefully, next, this time next year, these numbers will look more appropriate for the following year as well. So all that being said, as I've said all along, it's a very conservative estimate for revenues. We only are showing about a fourteen thousand dollar increase from this fiscal year to next fiscal year because we do have decreases in some categories. So that is what we're showing for general fund revenues for next year. Are there any questions about the general fund revenue?
I, I, just quickly, I, so we're going to lose the eight hundred thousand for the last two years that we've got from ARPA. Do we, did that fill a hole that was eight hundred thousand dollars in revenue that we see coming back? Or are we going to be stuck with an eight hundred thousand dollar hole and two hundred thousand dollars in new revenue? What does that look, can you see that far out in your crystal ball?
Well, that's kind of what we've been talking about is that we, we are not going to see that eight hundred thousand dollars. That has been a, a boost to our revenues for the last, I mean, we, we made up revenues and it's to make up for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one and nineteen twenty because all of twenty was COVID. So it's to cover some of that here. So we have those monies. And so it's kind of inflated what our revenues are for the last two years. Next year, our revenue should be about nine million dollars. Maybe we, maybe numbers will be different and will maybe be nine point two million dollars. But we will see a deficit, so we will need to cut our expenses next year in order to be able to have a balanced budget, absolutely. But that's something that I feel confident that, that Michael and I can do. I have, I have worked in the city with an extremely tight budget. I think part of that is doing more of the zero-based budgeting approach where we actually look at every line rather than saying that's about what we spend every year, but really looking at every line and Michael and I are anyone doing that, starting right away. So that way, we get everybody on board that we have to watch what we spend if we want to be able to continue moving forward and providing the services that we've been able to provide.
How dependent are we on the court fees that we receive? Because, okay, I'm so glad you're shaking your head. No, good. Thank you. Okay.
That, that is really minimal in our, in our overall revenue stream. And when we said, I'm like, you think that's really it? Yeah, like I could go larger. I think that's good. So I, I'm not really worried about that revenue at all. That's really, I think, I mean, if you look back, one of our highest years was two hundred thousand dollars in, in revenue overall. That's just such a small portion of our revenue.
The form that we had got, the chart that you gave us, Lou, Council, those numbers were just, yes, example numbers? Or those are numbers that you thought we scored? Because I see the very difference.
Those were the current year's budget. Those were from the current year budget.
Okay, so those like the estimate twenty twenty, twenty-one, I'm sorry if I'm asking, because I just want to make sure those were somebody else's current budget where they thought we should have been.
Current years that they thought we were, we were going to be this current fiscal year, not next year. So we're looking at twenty-two, twenty-three is for next year. So that was the budget that was created by the prior Director of Finance. He was here for the current year that we're in that ends June third. So I didn't have these final numbers yet, so I couldn't give these to you when we had our meeting. But I wanted to give you some things so you had a document to kind of review and kind of familiar, familiarize yourselves with before we got to tonight, if that makes sense.
Okay, so can you explain? I'm sorry, y'all. I just want to get some understanding. Can you go to line thirty-nine, forty-five on the miscellaneous other revenue? So we actually hit a million, a million four?
That is what we're estimating for this fiscal year, yes, ma'am.
Okay, and back then, they estimate only a hundred and fifty thousand. So that's why I was just seeing like a number just jump.
Well, because that's ARPA money. We weren't interested, eight hundred thousand of that is ARPA money, which we were not anticipating at that time when the budget was made last year. And so that's probably a big chunk of it. And as I've said, there's been, just with all of the turnover and the former director leaving, I think there's been just some misallocation of revenue and not putting in the right account numbers or the, the best account numbers to reflect what it is. And that's something that I'm going to work on with training Tanya and I are planning on doing this year to help everybody have a better understanding of where to put everything in the budget. Does that make sense?
Yes, I was just trying to compare because a lot of things were negative, but we have a lot of things now that's way above and a lot of things that was way above that's low. So I was just trying to differentiate how we had that big gap. So administrations, that's basically what I'm hearing.
Yeah, yeah, it's just the way that it's actually been reported over the calendar year. And we're going to work to make sure things are recorded in a more appropriate way this year, basically. Any other question? Okay, so then the next category of revenue is the Police and Fire Retirement Fund. Due to market volatility, I am going, I am budgeting to have earnings to be down about fifty-five thousand for next year. I just, I have no idea what it's going to be, but I don't think we can have a banner year ever here. There's going to be a bad year coming at some point. So it's not a huge hit. It's about fifty thousand dollars. But that is the biggest issue that I, that I had with that budget that I'm going to make the change. So I'm budgeting one point, one million, three hundred, ten thousand dollars for next year as opposed to the one million, one hundred and thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four that we're projecting for this, this current fiscal year. Are there any questions about the Police and Fire Retirement Fund?
Just a quick one. If we have a decrease in the earnings for the retirement fund, does that impact our ability to make those payments?
If we continually have a decrease over a small, a period of time, yes. But you have fluctuations year to year. So you'll have a really great year one year and then you'll have a bad year another year. But they usually average out to a certain percentage. And actually, I'm working to set up a meeting with the Police and Fire Retirement or Pension Board or Retirement Board, I don't know what it's called. And they're going to be to kind of look at how these allocations are now that, you know, as we're going forward so that we can keep on making sure that those allocations are in a good spot. Any other questions? So, excuse me, the next category would be the Special Business District Fund. I projected our revenues at about fifty-five thousand dollars for the property taxes. Business licenses, we're budgeting about fifty thousand dollars for business license tax. And this budget wouldn't, this was set, this was set by, I worked with Laura over, Laura is Community Development Coordinator and works with SPD to try to come up with a budget that works within. She didn't want me to over, overestimate that fifty thousand dollars because she was afraid that if I did, that it would put their budget way out of whack. So this is the number we agreed on. And then if you notice, the forty-five hundred dollars in other revenue is a big jump. And that is because going forward next fiscal year, the Special Business District is going to, generally what happens with the cop problems, we put two, where all the money goes back to the different businesses that participate. All the money is going to go back up after anything above the marketing expense for those two events because the city pays for those, those marketing expenses, so, or the SPD does. So they're going to recoup their marketing expense, but that's it. Everything else is expected to go back to the business. Now that they've kind of started going and they've gotten some momentum, I think that they have their revenue handled back in a better sense. Are there any questions about special, yes?
Yes. So my question is, is about them spending on their, their reserves? Like, does that, I know we can't do that as a city, but like, can you just explain to me, does that matter if a commission or a board does something like that?
Um, it, it really doesn't. What matters is that, so you build up a reserve and then you will expend your reserve for big projects or things like that. If they aren't able to, to get by on a day-to-day basis with their, just like with their operating budget. If we can't live on our revenues, then eventually they will have no reserve and they will, they, they, they will, they will have to cut something. So that is one of the things they're working on is trying to recoup some of those costs like they did for the marketing expense and things like that. So that way they, they can live better within their budget. When they use it for capital expenditures, things like the directional signs and other items like that or the decorations for the downtown district, that's fine. That's just like our capital budget. And we use, we go into our reserves to do different capital projects and that's okay. It's really when your operating continually exceeds your revenues, that's when you have to really have a concern.
So I guess a consequence would be we wouldn't be able to have a sweet tooth walk one year if, if that continued to happen. Is that right? Just as an example?
Yes, and they would have to cut something. And what that would be, I don't know. And maybe they'd say we're going to do a little bit less advertising or something. But they would have to cut something if they're not able to manage within their own revenues at some point.
Thank you.
You're welcome. If there's no other questions, I was going to move over to the Trust and Agency Fund. This is money that we hold in escrow, so we have like court bonds and excavation escrows, demolition escrows, things like that. Nobody really thinks that we're going to have a whole lot next year. So we just kind of have it at a minimum amount of about sixty-five hundred dollars. This is not really our money. It's just money that we hold on to for people and then we have to refund. Any questions about the Trust and Agency? So the next section is the Henry Road Special Allocation Fund. As we've talked about before, this is a tip district, so we get the money in, we use that money to pay for the Maplewood South redevelopment area, which is the Henry Roads, South of Folk and the Henry Road. Henry Road, South of Folk, and then it's in the other Henry Road one.
Take your time, take it.
I can't remember what it is to save my life, but it's the, I can see it. I just can't think of what it's called. I'm sorry. Thank you. Yes, thank you. I don't know why I couldn't think of that. But anyway, so this is the money, this money comes in, we use that money to pay off the debt. So it just comes in and goes straight out. This is one of the tips that's going to be paid off in the next several years. And at that point, that those revenues will, will, this, this fund will be, I guess it'll be closed out. It's the best way, way to phrase it. So we'll close out the tip and then those monies that there's any extra collection can go back to the different entities that they're supposed to go to and it will just kind of go away. Are there any questions about the Henry Road tip? I couldn't think of the name of the street for quite a while. Sorry. All right. The next category is the Half-Cent Capital Improvement Fund and it has dash streets. This is our capital improvement that we use for all of our capital improvement, like street improvements, things like that. The big thing I did want to point out is that where the half-cent capital improvement, the grant revenue was going up about one million, one hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. That is for the SDP project or the Surface Transportation Project that we have. And it's a federal project, so we will, we have the expenditures that we went through, I think, two weeks ago that we showed that we have that very large grant expenditure for the SDP. This is that offset of the government funding that we have. So we record the revenue and we record the expenses as well. Are there any questions about the half-cent capital? So let's see, the next section is the Half-Cent Park Tax, Sales Tax. So on that, I don't have very much change really at all. I really think that one's going to pretty much stay pretty stagnant. I, I, I'm hoping for the one point five million, we're going to be really close to that. So I really don't want to go up too much above that because I, I don't want to be overestimating on our revenues. So I'm saying it's one million, five hundred thousand dollars, five hundred, one thousand dollars for next year. Are there any questions about the Parks Sales Tax? The next one is the Sewer Lateral Fund. For that, we generally collect about one hundred and twenty thousand. It looks like the last several years we've been a little bit short, but that's, that's a standard for almost everybody. It's about one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And most places only can do about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in repairs in a year, too. It's just, it's really hard to do that many, just because of the, and what it involves. But, so I kept the revenue at the same, about a hundred and twenty thousand, it's fifty dollars on everybody's sewer bill. So it, it doesn't really change. It's on every residential sewer bill. So those numbers don't change that much. Is there any question? Okay, the next one is the Police Asset Sharing Fund. This is the Police Forfeiture Fund. I think, I think if, I don't remember if I've mentioned it to Councilwoman Jones and Councilman Homa, but this is when the police department is part of like the Major Case Squad. And so then they get some, they, there's a police forfeiture that, some of that money comes back to the city. We have not received anything a long time, even though I do believe we have people that are part of Major Case Squad. I'm not quite sure why they aren't doing that, but they are not projecting any revenue at all for this next year. When I talked to Acting Chief Niber, he said that they, they have not received anything and they have not heard of anybody receiving anything for several years and they're not anticipating. So I don't really know what, I think it may be a thing of the federal government being behind. I'm not sure. Are there any questions? I hope that self have a hard time with that because I don't really know and I don't think she does either. Sorry. Oh, there you go. Okay. Um, the next one is the Half-Cent Fire Sales Tax Fund. This was originally the Quartercent. Um, the next one is the half cent fire sales tax fund. This was originally the quarter cent fire sales tax that just recently they had, there was a voter approved approval to go to the half cent fire sales tax fund. As you can see, I have the revenue projected for about one million, five hundred fifty thousand dollars. That is an increase over this current year, but it is almost, almost doubling what we received in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. I don't think even though it's a half cent, it's going to be an exact doubling of our prior years, but I think it'll be close, which is why I went to the one million, five hundred fifty thousand dollars. Any question? The next one is our solid waste fund. That is based off of real property taxes is, is the main revenue, our personal property taxes. That's the main revenue source for this. I am anticipating keeping that the same for next fiscal year. And so there's really very little change and it's going to go up about twenty-five dollars for next fiscal year. It, it, it's a proper, it's a special property tax base and that there's just not a lot of volatility, I would think, in that account. It's a general rule. Is there any questions? Not sure what happened there. Never mind. Am I not on the call anymore? Yeah, I'm not following. All right, one second. I dropped off. Yeah. You may need to share. Am I better now? All right. So hopefully everybody can still see this. Okay, so the next category is Deer Creek Special Allocation Fund. That's for the Deer Creek, Deer Creek Shopping Center and Deer Creek Park area. And that is also a tip. We are budgeting about five hundred thousand dollars in property taxes as well as maintaining about nine hundred thousand dollars in sales taxes for next fiscal year. So we are looking at an increase of about one million or about, sorry. We're looking at an increase of about a hundred thousand, one hundred forty-eight thousand dollars next year.
So when I hear that there's like a TIF that's, that's hitting the end of the road, I think that, oh, happy day for us. That's correct, right? So like you said, we have one TIF that was going to be complete. You think like twenty twenty-six and another one, I think twenty twenty-five. So that's going to substantially assist us in our revenues. Would that be correct?
It should, yes. So the theory of the tip is that it's a, it's a devalued property. Then all of the differential in those taxes that the increase of those taxes, that money goes back to, you know, to pay off the, the debt that was used to develop that area. And so now we aren't really receiving the full value in property taxes. We should be receiving full value. So in area, that should help our revenues for those areas.
And under what circumstances would that not be true? Because you said in theory, so I'm kind of curious.
So, for example, say, say Deer Creek was just like a big giant Walmart. And say here at the Deer Creek Shopping Center was just a giant Walmart. And they said, when the tip ended, they said, you know what? I think we're going to move up to the corner of Stanley and one of those situations. So it, they're generally that you do see a revenue increase. There are rare occasions where you may not, where if they bail out, then you have vacant property. You just aren't going to see those kind of. But I don't want to say you always do because I've been around one that you didn't. So.
The only one that won't happen to is Walmart and Sam. No, they did, not only did they not have a tip, but they, there's an agreement that if they ever vacate the buildings, that they give us like a million bucks a year per building or something crazy. So.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So if there's no questions, other questions about the Deer Creek Special Allocation Fund? The next one is the firehouse funds. This is a property tax that's assessed in order to be able to pay off our, our, you know, our fire house fund debt service. I'm projecting about five hundred thousand dollars in revenue next year. You're limited to the amount of a fund balance that you're able to have in your general obligation bond debt service. So, so that way you don't overcharge your residents for that expense. So I, I think it'll probably wind up going down next year because we do have, we have a positive fund now at the moment. So. And it's all done on a state formula that makes sure that you, you have one year of expense and it, it's a whole big formula that they do, but the state reviews it to make sure that you're not over allocating for that.
Did we refinance those at one point? Do you, you have, remember offhand? I know we did one of them, but I can't remember if it was firehouse or pool bonds.
Pool bonds are paid off. So I think it's a firehouse that we refinanced. I believe, yeah, we just talked about what's the end of the day, firehouse, we did refund this. Are there any other questions about the firehouse fund? So then the last funding source that we have is the proposition P, which is a sales tax that's based off of all of St. Louis County. And then it's given back to the city in a, on a per capita basis. So I am projecting about four hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. I know that's a pretty substantial increase in sales taxes. But I think St. Louis County wide, there will be an overall increase, maybe not just here, but using the whole county, I expect us to have a pretty significant increase. Every time that I thought that Prop P was going to go down or stay level, it is always gone up at least twenty thousand dollars. I don't know why, because I cannot figure it out, save my life. But it always goes up. I, I can't figure it out. So. But that would be all of our revenue. So I'm trying to projecting a total revenue increase for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three of twenty-one million, seven hundred eighty-five thousand, nine hundred seventeen dollars. So that's kind of where I'm at. If, if there's any other questions about overall revenue, you have any answer then?
Okay, I think I'm going to ask the same question. No, I just need to make sure because this is messing with my brain too bad. Estimate for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two was under another administration? Or was it your numbers?
No, it was, it was done this time last year.
Okay.
For the current year we're in.
So the numbers you showed us on our paperwork, estimate twenty twenty-one should match the numbers that we see now on estimate twenty twenty-one on your spreadsheet today?
No.
Or would they be different?
They'd be different because we have experienced differences over the year. So we didn't budget for the eight hundred thousand dollars in our funds. So that would be an increase to the budget for this fiscal year or for the twenty-one, twenty fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, which is why it's the estimate. It's not an actual and it's not budgeted. It's the estimate of revenues for the current year that we're sitting. But the one that I showed you before that said estimate was the proposed budget. It's kind of confusing because you have two years of estimate. So that was the proposed budget for the current year. And I didn't use the proposed budget. I used what our actual estimates are for revenue projection.
So this year, you actually for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-one on your spreadsheet is you actually use the numbers that happened?
Yes, ma'am.
And the numbers that we saw was the number that they actually estimated.
Yes, ma'am.
So to me, it should say actual numbers for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two instead of estimate. That's why.
It's not actual yet.
We're not quite down here?
No, we don't end until June. So it is, next year it will say projected. And then the estimate for twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, that will actually say budget. So I'm going to make a few changes to make it a little bit easier to read. It took me a minute to figure it out when I first started and I want to make it as easy and concise for you all as possible. So there'll be some few changes, but I didn't want to change anything this year because it isn't my budget yet. If that's okay. No, but and if you have any other things that are confusing to you, please let me know or any of you would let me know so that way I can try to make those clear going forward in the next budget year. Because I do want to make it easy for everybody to understand. I get it because I, I deal with numbers, but if you weren't looking at these kind of budgets all the time, it, it will be difficult sometimes to figure out. And it took me a minute to figure this one out. So.
Just to sum up, and I think I understand, the estimates that you're providing are ten months of actuals and two months of estimates essentially.
Correct.
Right.
I mean, I understand that. I just want to make sure everybody understands. Like, if you see the numbers that we was presented, these numbers are so way off and I'm accounting too. So I'm kind of like looking at just where she's looking at these numbers like, like these numbers like way off, like you did a whole lot of changing, you know, and I was like, did they really mess up that bad? I'm sorry. But it's just like, wow, you know, but these numbers are really like off, like millions of dollars off in every category in different ways. So that's why I asked that question.
It, it is based on, so, so when here, when my predecessor was sitting here, she was trying to do the budget based on what her best guess of what was going to happen coming out of COVID. And, and to be honest, I, I have tried to look at where I used to work to see how bad my projections were. And a couple of, the few that I've been able to see have, have, some of them have been really off. It, it was a very hard year to make a projection for. And as was the year prior, they were both really difficult years. So in being, doing accounting, you, you understand that it's just hard to really project. I, I think she did the best she could, but I, I think as the numbers came in, they were very different. And then also how we actually recorded those. I don't know that they were always recorded the right way because there is a period of time where she was gone and I was not here. So there is a period of time where it was just kind of got to get the money deposited. I think this is the right accountant in those kinds of things. So like I said, we'll be training to make sure that everybody knows kind of where, how the better allocate and record stuff to make sure it makes more sense. Are there any other questions about revenue overall?
Are we okay going to consolidate budget number six? Thank you.
So I'm going to scroll down to page nine. There we go. So this is what is referred to as consolidated budget. It gives our major funds a beginning fund balance estimated, the revenues appropriations, if there's any transfers, there are all changes in the fund balance. And then what we're estimating the ending fund balance to be this June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. So if you notice, the very first column, it says beginning fund balance estimated. This is where I am projecting us to end at the, as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, after our audit is complete. This is where I think our numbers will be. So for the general fund, I estimate that our fund balance is going to be six million, two hundred forty thousand, two hundred twenty-six dollars. And so say likewise for the police and fire retirement, capital improvement, park stormwater, fire sales tax, solid waste property. Then we also have the consolidated non-major funds and those are all just grouped together, which are Deer Creek Special Allocation Fund, because those aren't really the ones that we utilize to manage services for the city on a day-to-day basis. One thing I did want to point out, like if you look at the general fund, for example, we are showing revenues of about nine million, eight hundred thousand dollars. We're only showing appropriations or expenditures of about three point nine million dollars. But then we have what I have termed as, what I have categorized as the transfers out of about five point eight million dollars. Those transfers out are, if you recall, when we were going through the budget, that all of the fire expenses moved to the fire sales tax, all of the police expenses moved to the Prop P. But neither one of those had, have the kind of revenue to cover all of the expenses for either one of those departments. So there is funds from general fund that have to supplement those budgets. That's what those transfers out are. They're to cover those too. And that's why our appropriations look like really spinning three point nine out of nine point eight. We are sitting pretty, but we really aren't because we have to supplement fire and police. So for that example, you will see that we are showing a change in fund balance of about one hundred twelve thousand dollars, three, one hundred and twelve, three hundred twenty-one dollars for the fiscal year. Which is a very slight increase, but again, a very important increase. We need to have an increase in our fund balance, even if it's ten dollars every year. If we, if we can't put ten dollars away, then that's where we're, that's where our budget becomes an issue. So we need to always be putting something in the fund balance. We can take out of fund balance in several years from now, after we get off of our watch, we'll be able to take out of a balance for major projects. Like if we wanted to supplement capital funds on street improvements, we could do that. But, and that's what you would use that fund balance for, but you can't use it every year to make payroll in regular, everyday operating expenses. So one of the other things I did want to point out, you will notice that there's hundred and sixty-three thousand, five hundred dollar transfer in to capital improvement and hundred sixty-three thousand, five hundred dollar transfer out of park stormwater, park stormwater fund. Transfers about a hundred, one hundred sixty-three thousand, five hundred dollars in funds for the gutters for the gutters for the street projects. So the, the curves and, curves and gutters, I couldn't think of curves. Curves and gutters for the storm, for any of our street projects. Park, stormwater money can be used for that portion and only that portion. So the, when they do the estimates, they figure out what portion of our street project expense is going to be for that portion. So we do have that transferring, transfer out from those two funds. Also, if you look at the fire sales tax and the Prop P funds, that four point two million for Prop P and one point five million for fire sales tax equals the five point eight million that's going out of general. I know there's a lot of information on this page, but it actually is a very, a very good chart. If, if you can, if you can follow it all the way through, it actually is a really, really good chart. Are there any questions about this?
Just a comment to say thank you for this. Because I think you've all been looking for this.
Okay, I thought you all always got this. Well, anyway, so there you go. Okay.
Are you concerned about the final amount for the capital improvement fund? It's quite a hit.
So there's a couple of things with that. One, we knew that we were dipping into our reserves and we use that for a lot of things. We knew that we were going to have to for the surface transportation project because of those expenditures went up. So one thing is those, those proposals for the project came in and they actually came in significantly less than what Anthony had budgeted. So it was, I had already gotten all of this done. I wasn't going to go back and try to change those numbers because until the project's complete, I really don't know that that's going to happen. But it is projected to come in well under budget. So that's really good news for us. The other thing is that in going through all of these pages and making sure that everything and kind of going up what I was going to go over, I did notice that one of the changes that we had made was taking about eighty thousand, five hundred dollars out of capital expense and moving it to the general fund. And that did not get reflected in these final numbers for capital. So actually, we are projecting about a hundred fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and eighteen without any savings from the street project, the Manchester Phase Four project.
So like pending an emergency, that's sort of the floor for the capital improvements?
We really don't want to go below that. So and Anthony is aware, we, we did talk about it a lot. And, and he's like, well, I've been trying to build it up for a bit. And he's like, I'm going to have to build it up again before we can do some, you know, certain projects. But that is one of the things we do, which is why it's always important to keep that fund balance. So when we do have things that we really want to get done, we have the money difference. Are there any other questions about that? Okay, I apologize. I'm going really slow and I don't mean to. I really do apologize. Okay. So if we go to page ten. So this is the overall operating budget. And again, this is a little bit confusing compared to the other page. Um, because it shows general fund expenditures is only three point nine million. It doesn't have that transfer, which is why I thought that other page was so important to include. Otherwise, you'd have to look at this and compare the other and then note that there's transfers in and out and it's kind of confusing. But on here, if you look, you will see that down at the bottom again, it does show that increase for, um, the half cent fire sales tax going from about one point five million to three point three six million and Prop P going from about six hundred twenty thousand dollars to four point nine million. So that's why all of those expenses are now held. It'll make it easier for both of those, um, department heads to be able to manage the budget, especially as our budget's heightened. Tried to be in a shoot different budgets would just be a nightmare, so. Are there any questions about this, um, the overall budget expenditures? Okay, so then the rest of this is just going to be any changes that we have made in, um, the budget itself. So under legislative, as you will see on page eleven and on page fifteen, which is the, um, which will show the actual account that is being, let me get to it. Um, account, um, it shows the actual account, which is account number six zero four zero zero professional services. That number changed to fifty eight thousand, one hundred twenty five dollars. Then if you go down about three more pages to page eighteen, you will see that what we have done is we've added about six hundred fifty thousand dollars to this budget. Should the council choose to have the city fund the five oh one C three creation document, document creation, we have the money budgeted, it was about six hundred fifty dollars. Um, I felt that if that was something that the council did decide to do, it was easier to put it in than to try to absorb that somewhere else. So obviously, if the council doesn't decide to go that route, that money will be spent. Because the rest of it was, the rest of this account or that line was strictly just for the equity consultant fees. So there's nothing else coming out of this line. Um, under executive, you will see that we did have some changes there under other services and charges. Um, some of that was for, let me go to the page that it's on, which is on page twenty two. You will see there's an increase in the insurance and bond. Um, that was the estimate that we received finally from the, um, insurance period for all of our insurance for the next fiscal year. Um, there's also an increase under memberships of about six hundred seventy five dollars. That membership increase was for, um, the Green City Challenge membership that was discussed at the meeting of four hundred dollars plus two hundred and seventy five dollars for, uh, membership in the Missouri Economic Development Financing Association. Um, I believe that's something that the city had belonged to before and and wanted to get back into that. Um, the other, we other change in this line was all, or in this department was under account number six zero five six zero, which is traveling conference. And there was a total of seven hundred and twenty five dollars added to that for the, um, Missouri Economic Development Financing Association Conference and for the city manager to attend that conference. Which I believe was on page four, if I can get to it. There it is. And that's in October of twenty twenty two. All right. So the next items that we have, um, one thing I did notice, it was page thirty one, I believe, in your packets. There was a page thirty one and thirty two and they were duplicates. So just one of them needed to be removed and I apologize. Um, so, um, I did remove that out of here. Two. So if we go down to the legal department, which is the next department. Okay, there you go. Um, in the legal department, um, there was a change, um, both to the objective number one. Um, per the judge, most of the changes, not all, but most of the changes in this were, uh, language changes that were recommended by Judge Miller and the court clerk. So Judge Miller wanted us to change objective number one to efficiently handle and equitably, to efficiently handle and equitably handle cases. So that's what we left that as. Um, there was, um, some additional funds added to fund our account four zero six zero zero, which is legal counsel. And that was for expenses for the, the code. Never, I never say that right, wasn't it the code revisions or?
Yeah, this was in case, uh, member, pay our members of councils, in case, as there is all the orders, review committees. We need assistance in that regard, we wanted to have some money there, um, to allow us to hire some experts. So that's what that's for.
Sorry, I would say code, it's ordinance review. Um, so we did put some additional funds there. We also, I think there was one other tree, oh, during our review of the legal department, um, it was mentioned that there was, um, a conference that the judge was supposed to attend that has been added, um, as a, it's a conference in May of twenty twenty three, it's a judges conference. It's the MMACJA, I don't know what that stands for. Um, I think I did at one point, but I don't remember anymore. Um, and it, it was an addition of one thousand five hundred dollars for that conference. Um, some of the other changes you will see in there on the budget worksheets back here and, um, that the court clerk wanted me to change the training to say regional training for a court clerk. Um, and then some of the other items of, um, the salary, appointed elected official salaries for the judge. I think it also used to say prosecuting attorney, but we have the prosecuting attorney now, so. Um, then office supplies, there was, I think, some sort of document in there that they don't use anymore um, as well as putting of legal forms, checks and deposits. I think there used to be case forms and they don't use those anymore with the shipping court. So they wanted us to correct those to go forward so that they must more accurately reflect what is actually going on, so. Um, the next one was, the next department is public works. Um, as was requested in one of the council meeting, one of the budget work sessions. Um, objective number one, we added in pedestrians for, to maintain safe, clean, smooth streets and bridges for motorists and pedestrians. So that change was made. Um, we also changed, um, others or materials and supplies. We changed that amount and that has to do with the, um, repair and maintenance. We added the thirty six thousand, eight hundred dollars under, um, street maintenance repairs. We added the twenty one thousand, five hundred dollars, salt, juice, calcium chloride, we added fifty two thousand dollars. Um, traffic paint, we added seven thousand dollars, concrete materials, we added eighty five hundred dollars and asphalt materials, we added seventy five hundred dollars. When this budget was presented to you, all, all of those were transferred over to capital. Um, since capital was very strained, we went ahead and put it back in general. So that way, um, we didn't have capital so strength. So it, it's about eighty thousand, um, or I guess it's about ninety five thousand, five hundred dollars differential. Um, only fifteen thousand, five hundred actually came out of the capital budget when I did the overall expenditures. I don't know why I put them in both by accident, so. And you'll see that when we get to the capital expenditures budget and I'll show you where that is. Um, but so as you see on these budget worksheets on pages, this will be on pages like a sixty six, sixty seven, in seventy. You will see where it said originally moved to fund twenty four, it's now moved back and that, that will be renewed for the final budget worksheet, or papers. But I wanted to keep that in there so you could see what happened. Um, so those are all of those that were moved back over. Seventy. So then the next one is place and fire retirement was fine. Page seventy four was also duplicate, in fact, it was, um, I believe the operating budget again. It was a sheet that I was trying to use to check my numbers and I lost it in my stack of papers, unfortunately. And so I found it when I was doing the, this review, so I apologize on that as well. So you can take page seventy four off. So we are then to page seventy five, which is the parks department. There were no changes to place and fire. Um, which is parks, special business district, we didn't, we can change this from what was presented to council. And they wrote special allocation, we didn't make any changes. Oh, I'm sorry, we're in capital. I skipped right over capital. So here's the capital, as you can see, I highlighted the changes that were made, um, to materials and then to capital outlet. So as you can see in account five zero three three zero, repair and maintenance, great repair, salt, traffic paint, uh, those all were in here as well. So those all should have been zeroed out, which is the eighty thousand, five hundred dollar differential that I had mentioned earlier. So I do apologize for that. And the other change that I did want to point out that was made on this, um, was we changed the mini excavator. That was originally going to all be purchased by, by capital, but that is also going to be used in our parks department as well. So they are going to, um, absorb a small portion of that. So, um, we have forty thousand, five hundred dollars here and there is a portion of that in about thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars of it is in the parks budget. So that is a change that we did make. Um, one of the other things Anthony would, after we had presented our budget, he had gotten some of his numbers back for engineering and testing services that decreased by about fifteen thousand dollars. So that was a good thing for us. And, um, computers and equipment, he had money budgeted under computers, equipment, and he also had it in capital outlay as well. So since it was duplicate to, we went ahead and removed that because there's none that they have in both spots. And those were all the changes that we had in capital. And as you can see, that's reflected there. So the next one, um, Cambridge comments, we didn't have any changes from what was originally presented to council. Um, the only change that we had for parks was the capital outlay for the mini excavator, which was about thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars. And that would be on page ninety two. So, there you go. Oh, and the curves and gutters, I forgot to mention that. That's the one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that was curves and gutters that we didn't have from there, so that is that, that transfer. Um, and then that was all for, for parks, we didn't really do a lot of changes to that. We didn't do any changes to sewer lateral. Um, the next one that we made any changes to was the half cent fire sales tax, police asset we didn't change. So the fire, have some fire sales tax. Um, every, every fun, or every department did have an increase in personnel and insurance costs because we got our final, final insurance costs and we have the two percent wage increase that's been added into each one of these from our original presentation. The fire department does have some other additional changes. We did have the promotion of the fire chief and then they had some other internal promotions within to their assistant chief and then battalion chief and captain and so forth as it goes down the line. Since we did have that, that information early enough, I went ahead and made those changes so that way this budget reflects as most accurately as possible what the financial expenses are going to be for the fire department. So, um, that's why that is highlighted as personnel services and none of the rest of the departments are highlighted because, um, the city managers already mentioned the two percent increase for salaries, so that's where that change was. Um, the other change in fire was under other services and charges. So if you bear with me, if you can see here online, six zero one one five, it's ECDC dispatching, which is the central dispatching, um, that actual amount actually went down. That amount was originally budgeted, um, about, we saved about twelve thousand, five hundred eighty nine dollars on that line. Um, there were some changes made at, um, east central dispatching as well as call violence that fluctuated and so we were able to see some savings there, so that line did go down. The only other thing that was changing this is the wording on the capital outlay line, um, the UTV that they were planning on purchasing um, for public relations, storm response, special operations, that was only going to be purchased if they received the firehouse subs grant and if they would pay a hundred percent of it. So I just added that language in there, so that was the only other change that was made to the fire system. And then the last fund that we have, or department, I guess, we have solid waste, which we didn't make any changes from the original presentation. We didn't change anything to the Cambridge Commons or Deer Creek. Or firehouse funds. We tried to make, we tried to make as few changes as possible, I was surprised when I was going through that there were so many because I really thought we didn't make any, but I, I was wrong. So and proposition P, we did make, um, a change. One of the things we did is, um, we did find that, um, well, this one doesn't show it, but personnel services, um, for salaries, um, apparently, um, for officer fight, his education was overlooked when they did the budget for that, it was four hundred fifty dollars that they added in for his education. Um, and when there was a formula error for officer younger. So for some reason, it wasn't adding in his education, so that correction was made. Um, and unfortunately, um, acting chief Nifer didn't, Nifer didn't find it until after we'd had our, our hearing. But, um, so those were just those two corrections there. And then the other item that we had was, um, we had, um, a decrease of thirty six thousand dollars in the, uh, east central dispatching services for the police department. So overall, that was a forty eight thousand dollar savings to the city with the change in the east, east central dispatching. So that was good. Um, and then the one other slight adjustment we made was memberships for, um, the Missouri Police Chiefs Association um, with the reorganization of adding in the assistant chief. After that was approved, they wanted to have the chief and the assistant chief both have memberships to the Missouri Association of Police Chiefs. So we did add that in, that was the only other change that was made. And with that, I think I've said a lot. Are there any questions that I can answer for anybody or is there any, any changes or anything that you all want to see altered?
Yeah, thank you, welcome.
Um, okay, so if there are no changes, I will be getting all this together. We will have our first budget hearing, our budget hearing and the first and second readings of the ordinance on May, May twenty fourth. And then we will have the final reading on June fourteen for the budget and then, then the budget is done. And then, um, well, we will have to produce our budget book and all of those normal things that we do. If y'all have any questions or notice anything else or have any other questions before the budget hearing, please, I guess, let Michael know and he'll let me know and I'll try to make sure I can give me some answers if there's any questions. Thank you.
Anything further, Mr. Reese?
No.
All right, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you, we are adjourned.